Okay, uh, we need a motion there. Can we open?
Okay, we're all set. Okay, all in favor. Okay, uh, I've got a letter that we wanted to read. We had a, uh, one of our associate members has, uh, unfortunately bit the dust here and left us alone. So, it's, uh, I'll read it for the record. It says, "Please just send my resignation from the board of ZBA effective April 1st, 2015. I would like to thank the board for the opportunity to serve. It was great working with the board. My reasons for resignation is, as a selectman, I found it is too confrontational being on this board. I would like to see the board continue to be proactive as a board and keep an open mind working as a board." Well, you know, if he'd have just sat here and didn't say anything, he wouldn't have been confidential. I mean, you know, I can't understand why he thought he couldn't just sit here and be quiet, but I'll have to discuss that with him. So, this is for the records anyways.
You didn't say who it was from?
It's, um, Bill Dunn, excuse me.
We'll miss Bill.
Yeah.
Thanks, Bill.
Yeah, thank you, if you're out there watching. Thank you very much, but, you know, you could have stayed on him and just sat there and been quiet, but that's, uh, hey, yeah. It happens. Okay, so now we've got, uh, let's see, under... Before we get, before we get too far on this 441 Main Street, you two gentlemen can come up, but I've got a question. I mean, I've had, uh... Yeah, I had an occasion to drive, uh, about, about, uh... I had an occasion to drive about, I don't know, 2,000 miles back from that state there, that long skinny state there. And so, on my way driving back, I was thinking about this whole process and, and I had, uh, the light went off up here on this little gray head of mine, and I'm thinking, "We're talking about a building." And I says, "I gotta check and see if there's a building permit for that building." Because the board only deals with permits, you know, with, with things that are permitted. So, in, in doing my research, I couldn't find a permit for that building. Do you guys have one? A building permit?
Question? Asking us the question?
Yeah, I'm asking, yeah, yeah. Either one.
Uh, my understanding, I don't have the, I don't have the full building jacket. My understanding is that there are several building permits that have been issued, one of which was a general permit, and I've seen the application for that. In the prior hearing that we were here, uh, March 4th, we talked about this, where three sheds were removed and were partly replaced by a building that, um, was not located on a plan.
Well, I, in all fairness, in all fairness...
I'd like to complete the response.
Wait a minute, let me just tell you. I also called the state or the Commonwealth Building Department to ask them, uh, if a permit would be required for a building of that size. What do you think their response to us?
Of course.
Yeah. So, I think, in lieu of that, I think that we're gonna have to end the discussion on this matter until a permit's issued or some type of documentation that gives us authorization to talk about it.
Uh, it's your prerogative, sir. We're showing up here at your request. You give a status report on one of the approaches that we were evaluating to resolve the setback issue.
Yeah. You guys want, I mean, I don't know, I mean, to me, that's...
What, what?
What do you think?
What's, what do you mean by general permit? And what was on a general permit?
These are the only two permits that were issued on the property. I don't, I don't see anything listed there. And, and I understand, I know what you're talking about. You said you took three down, you took one. But in, in talking to the state, I said, "Maybe I'm missing something here. Maybe they, they allow this," but the state doesn't allow buildings of that size to be built without a permit because there are certain criteria. They wanna know snow loads, wind, wind loads, frost protection, the type of, uh, bolting to the foundation. That stuff has to be, has to be reconciled with, with the inspector. So, I couldn't find a permit for that building.
This is not new, sir.
I understand. Yeah.
You're speaking as if it's new.
Well, it is new to me because I, I, like I said, I had time to really, really concentrate on and focus on this item. And I said, "Hey, wait a minute." I'm thinking, "Wait a minute, maybe, maybe, you know, maybe we shouldn't even be discussing this because there's no permit on it." So...
We're talking, we're talking about the domain of this particular board, which is zoning...
Yeah.
Relative to a building.
Yeah.
The building inspector has authority over both the building code and the zoning code. You folks have authority...
But the building inspector is licensed by the state.
I'd like to speak, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, the building inspector is licensed by the state, is he not?
Sir, we're here to talk about zoning issues.
I understand that.
And we're prepared to talk with you and engage with you on zoning issues. You've brought up a building permit issue and I've given you, as best I know, complete information with respect to what happened in the context of a building permit. If you'd like to speak about the zoning issues, we're more than happy to engage you.
I think what he's, he's looking at from what I'm hearing, whether or not it's properly before us and whether or not we have a jurisdiction to discuss something because, one, there wasn't a permit issuing, two, there wasn't a permit denied. So, what puts it before the zoning board so that we have authority to speak on a zoning issue? Is that, is that...
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly. I'm trying to figure...
So, is it under one of these existing permits that you open that door and assert that we have jurisdiction to discuss the permitting or the non-permitting of that particular building being erected? In violation of, uh, alleged setback violations?
Well, the alleged setback violations are zoning issues, and that is why we are here. We were invited here to, to discuss that, and we're, we're happy to engage you on it. Uh, it's also a matter which is in front of a court, and if we'd, if we'd like to resolve it through the courts, if that's the pleasure of the board, then obviously that's your prerogative. And we will, we will complete that exercise and do it that way. However, we were asked to explore different approaches by which an alleged setback issue, which we do not admit to, we contest, could otherwise be resolved. And, and we've expended a fair amount of effort in that regard. We were asked to give a status report on that, which is what we came to, to, to the board to discuss tonight.
So, let me add to this, 'cause I see that being more than one issue there. One is, and again, the setback violations alleged if you, depending on where the boundary of the property is, right?
Right.
And trying to determine where that, that line is.
You're exactly right.
Okay. Let's just say that you determined that there was no violation in terms of setback, you would still need a permit.
Correct. Correct.
To erect that building.
That's correct.
Those are mutually exclusive, but one is a condition precedent of the other.
That's correct.
All right, so...
And, and that's not a zoning issue. The building, the, the, the presence of a building permit in whatever form is appropriate for that building is not a zoning issue. The authority to issue that building permit from, in, in terms of the required zoning relief...
Unless it was appealed or there was a complaint on that, on that permit being issued. But in and of itself, that permit...
In and of itself, correct. I agree with you.
All right, I follow you on that.
So, uh, to expand upon that, we're looking retroactively at this building in connection with zoning issues. I mean, we, we can sequence these steps in any which way prospectively, but we're stuck with history here in terms of what has happened. We've tried to explain to you what did happen by way of building permit applications and identification of this new building, although without a location, and the subsequent issuance of relief showing the new building and its location. And since those facts have been put, put in place, a question has arose concerning whether there was a setback violation. And that is the issue that we're, um, willing to engage you with as to whether or not that allegation has a foundation or whether it can be readily resolved and eliminated from the other issues that are in dispute.
I think it's fair that we hear him while that is...
Yeah, that's what...
Go ahead.
Requesting you to do so or come up with...
Proceed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
For the record, my name is Sandy Matathia. I'm counsel with...
You spell your last name.
Sure. M-A-T-A-T-H-I-A. First name formally is Sanford. I go by Sandy.
Sanford. Yeah, my brother's born in Sanford.
Sanford, Maine.
I'm sorry, let's spell your last name again, I'm sorry.
M-A-T-A-T-H-I-A. I'm counsel with a law firm in Boston of Brackman, Sawyer, and Brewster, and I'm here representing Estes Park Trust. Eric Harper, trustee, in connection with the property of 441 Main Street. A month or so ago, we were here before this board, and, uh, the board asked for us to give a status report tonight concerning one approach to resolving an alleged setback issue involving building 105 at the property. And before jumping into that, I just would like to recognize that a couple of other things have happened in the last month. And as you know, when we were here last time, you folks requested the building inspector to act. That was under a letter dated March 5th, and in turn, we received a copy of that letter and provided our responsibility to the building inspector by letter dated, uh, March 20th. And, um, I hope you have received a copy of that.
No, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't receive a copy. We did not.
No.
No.
We haven't seen it.
Uh, a copy was, I was trying to email it as well as mail it. Um, the...
Did you send it back to the billing inspector? Or who did you, who did you address it to?
I addressed it to three people. It was directly addressed to the billing inspector, and it was copied to this board and the board of selectmen.
No, we didn't get it. Julie would've got it. Is it out, is it in our file?
No. No, we don't have it.
Do you have a copy?
I do.
Can I make a copy of it?
Can we make a copy?
Yep, for certain. The, the one footnote I'll add to this is that I searched for an email address for you folks, and I couldn't find one. The billing inspector has one, and the board of selectmen has one. As best I could tell, even in asking the town clerk, you don't. So, I was not able to give you an electronic copy.
Yep. Oh.
I asked you if you got that, and you said you did.
Oh, no. No, no, I misunderstood you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Okay. I, I mean, I'd, I'd be happy to give you a quick summary of that if you'd like, but, uh, let me, uh...
That'd be great.
Skip over it.
Would you give us a quick summary?
Um...
Go ahead.
Sure. This letter gives you our perspective on, uh, what we consider to be grandfathered business uses and why the uses that are in the rear of the property, um, are primarily storage with accessory uses that apparently were considered by the board to be a violation of the primary storage use. And what we did is for each of those four businesses that were identified in the board's prior decision as being in violation of the use authorized of this site, have proceeded to, in some detail, give you a description of what they're doing and why we consider it to be subordinate, accompanying primary storage use. And for that reason, allowed by your original, um, your original decision as an authorized storage use. And one of the four businesses, uh, I won't go through it in detail, but one of the four businesses, um, we have brought the towns' concerns to. And the long and short of their response is that they'll be moving out. One of the businesses...
You know who that is?
Yeah, I do. Let me just make sure I have the right one with the right statement. Truly Green Lawns in B-107B.
What, what, what was that again?
Truly Green Lawns in unit B-107B.
Okay.
This is put, this is put in writing on page...
They're moving out.
They're moving out.
Okay.
As we understand it, as of May 1st. Uh, this is in numerical order.
Go ahead.
108, um, is used by noise for boat storage. And that issue is presently being reviewed in detail by the Conservation Commission. They've asked for a removal plan. This is with respect to areas under their jurisdiction, riverfront and bordering vegetated wetlands and associated buffer zone.
Yeah.
Uh, and my understanding of this is that a plan is in preparation to be filed and reviewed and approved by the Conservation Commission with respect to the removal of boats and floats from their areas of jurisdiction.
Now, do you know who is, is this, is, uh, is this being addressed by the Leasee versus Mr. Harper? Do you know who's, who's, who's the negotiations with?
With the Conservation Commission?
Yeah. No, no, relative to the B-108 boat storage. Who are they dealing with, do you know?
Who is who dealing with?
The Conservation Commission.
They're dealing with Mr. Harper and his representatives.
Okay. I didn't know that they were dealing with the person who was asking, because that, Mr. Harper's not...
We are dealing with the Leasee.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And, uh, not in all instances, I, I, I would venture, are we getting complete cooperation? Because, uh, we agree with the Leasee that, uh, some of this activity is authorized. Uh, and so, we're trying to make appropriate adjustments in agreement with the Leasee in order to bring it into compliance with the expectations of various boards. Um, and, and so, when the removal plan, um, or the relocation plan for these, um, watercraft, um, is formulated, defined, and approved, and so forth, we'll have more information for you in terms of what's gonna happen on what schedule. But right now, it's, um, uh, being put together, and the Conservation Commission is reviewing it in detail.
Now, now, relative to this, I...
I should know, but I, I believe the next hearing is at about a week from now.
Julie's the second here to the board.
Okay.
As well.
Great, thanks.
Uh, no, no, uh, it's my understanding that, and I've been to a couple of meetings, that the, uh, floats were to be removed in October.
You talking about last, last October?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, of 2014.
Well, at the moment, uh, there's an engineered plan with crane service type support, uh, and the commission has requested this.
Okay.
In other words, don't do a thing until you define what you're gonna do
Okay.
and formally present it to us and get our approval.
Okay.
So, if, if something was supposed to happen last October, there's a present requirement for it to be defined in, in formal detail through a filing.
Okay.
And to receive formal approval before anything happens.
Okay. And is that, that's only general, next question?
Yes, it's our next question.
Good.
Seven o'clock at V C Park.
Uh, the third, um, business that was, um, identified as an issue of concern and an alleged violation concerns B-110, which is 110 towing. Uh, the landowner has made several visits and had discussions with the tenant. Uh, and our information, um, which was based on that search, is that some 10 to 15 percent of the floor area of that particular unit is sometime devoted to, uh, storage, excuse me, to, to mechanical repairs. Uh, and there is no indication that vehicles are being towed to that location. And we consider the mechanical repairs at that location to be accessory. And those, in fact, that entire unit was historically used by Estes for mechanical repairs.
Okay.
It was a continuation in minor part of what historically was, was conducted there.
Yeah, I, okay, good, yeah, yeah. Now, let me ask you a question relative to this. If we had neighbors sitting here stating that, that cars are being hauled in near various times of the night to this facility, then I'd have to assume that the neighbors were lying?
I, um, what I recall, um, I've invented the prior hearings, and what I recall the testimony being is that on one Sunday, a truck came in with flashers. I don't recall, um, again, I...
I think there's a police, there's, there's even a, a police, uh, report to, to the same, but I, but I'm, I'm, but the question I'm asking...
My understanding is there've been complaints made to the police that investigated, but they have not determined to confirm the accuracy of any of those reports.
Okay.
Concerning towing activity.
Yeah.
It's not to say a towing truck has not gone into the site.
Yeah. The, the timeframe was seven to seven, so if they came in the middle of the night, then...
No, I think this was, as I recall the testimony, it was some Sunday, a truck with flashers came in.
Yeah. That would be in violation.
But, sir, I, I, you're asking me to, a hypothetical question?
No, I'm not, no, no, I'm telling you, that would be in violation of, of the permit. The original permit was seven to seven.
So, you mean the, the accuracy of the fact is...
So, so I'm saying that if, if the neighbors are saying that, I guess maybe they may be lying, or, or there's a distortion as to what... I'm, I'm just trying, trying to figure out...
I have not been able to cross-examine the neighbors. I wasn't here to hear the testimony. I'm not sure if the board questioned them.
Yeah, no, we did.
Um, okay.
Okay, I just was wondering, you know, trying to, trying to get this clear. Thank you, though. You're doing good.
I agree, I agree that there's a, a timeframe for operations in the permit. And I would agree that the testimony, if, if accepted is true...
Yeah.
Would indicate an infraction of that particular requirement, yes.
Okay, just, I'm just trying to clarify in my mind, that's all.
Factual, factual question, I think.
See, my hair, my, my hair's a little grayer than, you know, yours is lighter, so you probably got a, got a fat loss. Mine's all leaking out. So, keep going. Thank you. You're doing a good job, by the way.
We're, we're not gonna get into that discussion.
Yeah, I, I remember one time I was coaching, I was coaching Little League, and the guy came in and says, "Jeez, your hair's all gray." He was like you, and I said, "I got it." So, I've been there. Uh, you're doing a good job, I appreciate it. Thank you. Keep going.
Uh, I'm trying. Uh, the, the last, the fourth, um, of these businesses is, um, B and B Sprinkler. And they're located in B-115.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and they have a small portion of the space that they lease, um, which is used for administrative office. It's less than 10 percent of the space that they lease. We think that that's a customary and subordinate and therefore accessory use of, with storage. Nonetheless, in an attempt to resolve this type of issue, we've negotiated with them to bring their administrative offices up front into, uh, the front building, which is 1, 101, excuse me. And the trust is, is trying to expedite the completion of construction work on that front building and expects that by midsummer that will happen, and therefore, the administrative offices will move to the front building from out back, leaving that tenant's business as pure, pure storage.
Well, you know, I mean, I wish you'd have come in the last meeting and, and had this last meeting, and, and we would've certainly been a, a lot further ahead than we are today. We wouldn't be having all these papers served by the, uh, by the sheriff and stuff. Because this is exactly what the board wanted, was information as to, you know, prior to tonight, we haven't had any type of, uh, an, an attempt...
Yeah, this was supposed to be done last time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
With the 45 days or 15 days.
Exactly. I mean, you know, this is all we wanted. I mean, this is, this is actually all the board... If you'd have come in last meeting and said, "Hey, listen, instead of coming and saying, 'We're, we're gonna, we're gonna take it to court because we, we think that,'" and I understand you gotta protect your rights because of the timeframe, but it was never, it was never, uh, an issue to say, "Well, listen, we need more time. Let's see what we can debate in it." I understand, I still disagree with you, but, but at least we're moving in the right direction. Okay? I, I, I don't agree with some of the things you said, but that's just me. I don't know how the board feels, but, uh, because I think it all goes back to, if you, if you watched the meeting, when I put the stuff on the board, which was, which I called the matrix, which was another term that the planning would use, and then everything that had to be less than, uh, equal to what was there with the letter from, uh, Mr. Estes, I can't think of his first name.
Howard.
What was it?
I think it was Howard.
Howard, but, you know, so you, you, you watched that meeting?
I sure did.
Yeah, so you know what I'm saying? So, so, uh, if, if, I'm, I'm saying that everything was, was, I, I told the board that I thought everything had to be either equal to what, what he had there or less than. So, we got a little disagreement, but we're, we're a heck of a lot further to an agreement than we were before last meeting. So, anyways, I, I appreciate you coming and talking because, but that isn't really what I thought you were gonna talk about. I thought you were gonna talk about the other thing.
I was.
Okay.
I was, I was alluding to some other things that...
But that's good. This is very good.
Haven't heard since we were last here.
Okay.
Okay.
You asked me to drop down to that, so that's what I'm doing.
Yeah, this is very good. I appreciate it.
Well, um, I think that probably does the letter justice, but I encourage you to read it for yourself, and, um, we hope that it takes the edge off of some of this stuff, if not eliminate some of it, and...
Well, I'm telling you, listen, out of, out of the, out of the four, you eliminated two.
Um, uh, one in short order, another in...
Yeah, B-10, B-107B is, is, is eliminated, and B-101B is eliminated, or will be.
101B?
Is that what you said, 101B?
I don't know.
B-115 B and B Sprinkler, is that what you're talking about? The last one?
Oh, I'm sorry, he's gonna move to 101B, excuse me. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, B-1, yeah. But, but I mean, the two are gone.
That's correct.
So, so...
So, it's just the boat storage and 110 towing?
Yeah, so it's the boat storage and 110 towing. So, we, we, we have 50 percent, that, that's wonderful.
Yeah, one is in process with PrimeCom.
Yeah.
And the other, uh, I guess we encourage you to look at with, um, greater clarity around the facts as best we've been able to determine them to be.
Yeah.
And, um, but in any event, if we're moving in the right direction, that's, that's encouraging from your perspective.
Yeah. Yeah.
We share that, we share that.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, you know... Yeah, we could've saved a ton load, months. If, if, if it only come up back, we, we've been meeting since October. If, if somewhere along the line, this, this type of dialogue happened back then, guess what? We, we, we wouldn't be meeting tonight talking about this. We'd be home thinking my diet coke.
Let's trip away.
Yeah, all right.
All right, yeah, let's, moving on.
Yeah, yeah, we wouldn't have these, we wouldn't have to cease... Yeah, yeah, we wouldn't have these, we wouldn't have to cease, I, I, I had a lot of hours doing that work, that, that really probably didn't have to happen if we could've got to this point before, because, you know, I, I spent a lot of time in that, so. Uh, we're doing very good, you're doing good, keep going, let's, let's, let's get the building out of there and we'll go home.
Okay. What about the building?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna build it here, we're out of it by ten, how about that, go ahead. You got ten minutes to get rid of the building.
Let's go.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing that happened was, uh, as, as we indicated when we were here, or I indicated too, um, is that we were seeking judicial review and so the appeal was filed and laying in court.
Yeah.
And, um, uh, perhaps we'll talk about that at some point as well, but that's in place. Um, so, a- as it respects, uh, uh, building one oh five, um, um, there were several options here, just to remind you, one was-
Three.
Several, okay.
Yeah, I wrote down three, but keep going.
Okay, buy more land, which ones are available.
Yeah.
Um, move the building, which costs a lot of money, and we'd prefer not to do, it's rather expensive and who knows what benefit it is because it's up against the utility corridor. Um, or three, uh, examine the line and where it is, is it on the sideline of the, of the utility right-of-way, or is it in the center line of the utility?
Yeah, I remember that.
Somewhere else.
Yeah, how'd you make it?
And so we, uh, tugged really deep into title, going back, not the usual sixty years, but somewhere in the order of a hundred and twenty years, uh, back into the mid eighteen hundreds.
Were the pilgrims here then?
I'm sorry, sir?
Were the pilgrims here?
They were long since dead by then.
You didn't go back far enough.
Not quite, although, uh, at one point I thought I was there.
Okay.
Um, and what we learned is kind of interesting, uh, 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 I'm not gonna get deep into it, I'm gonna try to give you a quick summary here, but, and a short answer, but, um, the railroad company that first put this into place, this right-of-way into place, was, as a rail corridor, did exactly what I thought they did, which is they built it based on, uh, a statute that allowed them to put it in place, um, as a matter of eminent domain, but what was, in effect, taken by them was not the fee ownership in that card,
Just the land.
Rather, just an easement.
Yeah.
And, um, as is somewhat common, they later, after the railroad was put in place, went around and attempted to acquire from the owners of the property-
Fees?
A deed to the fee.
Yeah.
And they largely did that, except in relevant part here, uh, where they attempted to do so, but, uh, the deed that went into the railroad company at that point, and that, at that point it was Boston, Maine, um, has been deemed by the lawyers who have looked at it to be defective. It was, uh, an estate, uh, of a guy and it was, uh, probated in New Hampshire, it wasn't in Massachusetts, and for that reason, the deed is not accepted as giving good title. Um, I also-
Now, who, who do you have that from?
I have it from the town's attorney.
Okay.
Uh, we did access a title report, uh, that was prepared for the town just recently, over the last year or so, in connection with their bike trail work. Uh, and, um, I can give you a specific reference, but-
That's okay, I, I just wonder where you got it from, you-
Yeah, uh, we got it through the Trails Committee, who got it from, uh, the town treasurer or finance director. Um, and it was done under a public records request, and we re, we didn't know if we had received everything, so we formally confirmed that. And, um, that's their opinion, we share it, yeah.
Okay, now, now, let me ask you, can, can you take that opinion?
Yes, sir.
And can that opinion, uh, be recorded?
An opinion?
Yeah, that says that the, that the land we're questioning, the right-of-way, is not owned in fee and therefore-
You could do a lawyer's title affidavit that you could get on record, sort of, uh, almost like an amicus thing, um, you know, you could, you could get it on there, um, to the extent it's helpful and, um-
A hundred and twenty years from now when somebody else is looking it up?
Yeah, yeah, what I'm saying, no, uh, I, I, cause if I remember correctly, what you're saying is that the, the railroad just took the land and said, okay, we're gonna use it as a right-of-way, and then therefore this land here owned half, this land here still owned half-half, so that, is, is that right?
If, if it was an easement, easement situation, that would be the general way that it would break out, yes, sir.
I mean, maybe two-thirds, one-half, whatever, no, was half-half?
Center line.
Okay, center line, so half-half, so, so you're saying that the land that we're talking about, from, uh, Main Street to the river, uh-
Not, not that entire section.
But, or the-
It's actually the section right next to building one oh five.
That's all you need, I mean, there, there was probably several deeds, you know, several deeds along the way that had to get, get, got taken, so that, so that you think you have documentation that says seventy-five feet back from, uh, Main Street to a hundred and fifty back there, or whatever the numbers are, and I'm just using illustration, uh, there, there is no fee, uh, associated with that right-of-way, is that, and you can document that?
It's, it's defective, yeah, yes, I can, I mean, I, it's, it's, it's in the town's, it's in the title report to the town.
Okay.
Um, and, and so it's, you don't have to accept my opinion, it's your own counsel.
No, 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 but, but, but you can, you could get it recorded, that, you could record something to, to-
As an appendix to that.
Yeah, as an appendix that says that from, I'll say, lot one oh one to, to lot one oh eight, uh, is, is, that right-of-way is not in the fee and it's, probably goes a halfway, that, that's something that, that you would feel comfortable doing?
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Could that defect be cured, because on the other side-
That's right.
There's the other interest that might wanna assert the right to that deed being-
Right.
Uh, good, okay, they correct, cure that defect with a, you know, is it indefinite reference, or what is it, is?
Yeah, so, so it's-
Yeah, but how, but people, can they cure it if the people have, uh, since deceased?
Someone with personal knowledge?
These things, um, I, I, I'm sure you know-
And what if they assert their rights to that, then you, you still have that issue?
You do, um, I, I, I think over the course of a hundred and fifty years or so, um, and where it's kind of come down to today, is, is, and this is just practical on my part, um,
You know the data that is-
As opposed to, yes, we do, eighteen sixty-nine.
So that's what we're talking about right now? I mean, eighteen sixty-nine was the defect of the, of the title?
So who owns that right now, is it Case Bank, who owns that? Who owns that property?
The, the corridor?
Yeah, yeah.
I thought it was Mass Electric and that exchange.
National Grid, isn't it?
But for these soft spots, if you will-
But when National Grid assert the right to that soft spot, the, the gap-
They may, they may.
How do you, but, but, but if you-
I don't know if they, if they would, um, I mean, they've, they've gotta deal with the same soft spot, so.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, but they'd have to go back to eighteen sixty-nine, try to, try to-
Work it out.
Work it off, yeah, that seems pretty far-fetched.
The, yeah, I, I think the more expedient and practical way to do it, I, and, and, I'm speaking sort of a little out of turn here, but, um, is to identify the parties that might have, based on current ownership, that might have a competing interest there or claim, um, assert some rights. And, and just say, okay, what can we agree to? Um, and the interesting part about this, from, from my perspective, is, uh, were this to be sort of a, become a contested zoning issue, setback in land court, for example, you would have to resolve the facts before you could get to the zoning. In other words, where's the property line? And you go back to eighteen sixty-nine and you, and, and who knows whether you would get an answer, much less what the answer would be, um, uh, in order to then have a factual platform on which to say, yes, it is, or yes, it's not, a setback issue, depending on where the property line is.
Who-
So you'd have to quiet the title?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, who, who, at, uh, who would be responsible for that, the town or, or the applicant? It'd be the applicant, wouldn't it?
Well, it's, it would be contested, so-
There's an asserting the right, I mean, if you, the burden of proof would be on the-
On the applicant.
On the applicant, wouldn't it?
Well, not if the town is asserting an enforcement claim. Um, if the town's asserting an enforcement claim, it's gotta go and have, have the burden of proving that the facts on which that, that claim is made are what they have assumed, so if, yeah, go ahead.
Was the state, the, the, the Golden Land Town Council gave an opinion on that, was that what you said?
Yeah, I thought so.
They were working for the town, as best I know, um, they were hired-
What's wrong with that disposal of the issue, if they, if they, if they submitted a legal-
That's what I'm trying, yeah, I, I, see, what, what I'm trying to get at is-
It doesn't say that we own it, it's, 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 it-
I understand, no, yeah, but, but, but the fact, what you're saying-
Does it say that it's an easement?
An easement versus, versus-
Does it defa, does it draw that-
They start from that premise.
Does it draw that conclusion that it's an easement?
Yes.
Versus fee?
Hang on, I, I don't wanna misrepresent, okay, and I, I'm not the one to speak to this, but my reading of it is that they agree with what I've told you, which is that the railroad came in in eighteen fifty, don't quote me exactly, and built it under a statute through a location filing with the county commissioners that established in the first instance an easement. And then they document all the acquisitions that the rail companies made from different parties who owned in order to pick up the underlying ownership, the fee, okay? And in the course of doing that, as they run down, down the corridor, they identify this section as having a defective intake, if you will, of the fee, so-
Did they, did they connect the dots and say it's unenforceable?
What's unenforceable?
The, the, the fee, it's, it's defective, and what is the, okay, so it's defective, so what is the-
No, I, I, I mean, they, they're not pers- I, I-
What do you have then?
Well, see, what I'm, what I'm saying is-
The deed's ineffective.
Okay, so they can draw that conclusion?
Yeah, Sandy, so, so-
It's a bit of a twist and tell us we rely on it.
That's what I'm saying.
We rely on it.
Exactly, what I'm saying is, could you document and say that, based on the information I have, and you gotta, you know, based on, I have, yeah, yeah, the, the lot back in eighteen, I guess sixteen, nineteen, eighteen, whatever the date is, these lots were, the, the, the deeds conveying those were defective, therefore, that section remains, uh, uh, an easement, which-
No, I can't affirmatively state that it remains one way or the other.
Okay.
To me, it's a jump ball, um, uh, in, in terms of whether this would come out one way or the other.
Well, what if, what if, what if-
Exercise associated with, with making that ultimate determination is somewhat ridiculous when you're talking about a five-foot, this or that.
But, but, but the law says you can't, you can't, you can't issue a, a permit in violation of setbacks, that's what the law says. I don't have, I don't have my books with me, but let me ask you, what if you were to-
We're gonna, we're gonna get, we're gonna have that discussion, Mr. Churman.
What if, what if you were to talk to, who, who, National Grid now? And if they had no interest in, in pursuing that defective title, then I would think that would be-
Right, could you give them notice and they waive?
Notice. They waive, there you are, what, what more do you need?
Notice.
Could you assert a claim and have them waive?
No, I don't know, I, if they're not selling land, I'm not sure they're waiving either, but, um, uh-
Yeah, but they don't have clear title to it.
No, they don't, uh, this, the, the interesting part about this to me is that it sort of becomes the town's issue. Not only in connection with enforcement, if you wanna stick to your guns on that, but also in connection with, um, uh, the ultimate acquisition of the requisite right-of-way for the bike path. Cause if you play this out, uh, what ends up happening is that the town receives an opinion of council, that clear, clean title or not, they being grid. The town does a deal with grid, saying, let's just say it's a no, no fee thing, here, uh, uh, we'll give you a trail easement. And then the town says, well, is that sufficient, what we receive from grid? Or do we have to go out and take land from other parties? In this particular case, you have an adjoining landowner who may or may not have an interest in that right-of-way, fee easement or otherwise. And you could simply say, no, we'll, we'll be happy to do sort of a, what's called a friendly taking, no compensation. And you confirm it as a matter of recorded instrument that, that goes on the registry.
But that, you're talking about the town.
It is that thinking that, um, we're, 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 we're currently engaged in.
Now, you're talking about the town taking.
Later, yeah, yeah.
You're assuming that the rail trail's gonna go through them.
Yeah.
I am, yeah.
Yeah, and you're, and you're assuming that the town would take that, but that doesn't, that doesn't, that doesn't change the, the five-foot problem.
Uh, no, it doesn't change the, the, it, it, uh, God bless you if you can find-
The town would have to give you the-
An answer that everyone will agree upon to the question as to who owns whatever part of that right-of-way, who owns the fee of whatever, whatever part of that right-of-way we're talking about. Um, my sense about this is, is that even the court may say, we don't know. Um, we don't even know who to notify, owners unknown could be the answer to that question. Um, uh, and, and so it's one of those questions that it may be more expedient to say, look, we have all the parties that we can conceive of who might have an interest in this thing, let's just get everybody to agree on what the answer is-
Well, I think that's what I, that's what I said.
Between ourselves.
That's what I said, Sandy.
Yeah, what can we, we're looking for something to rely on, we need facts to base a decision on it.
That's what I just said. Yeah, that's what I told you, I said, you, can you get National Grid to say, hey, listen, we don't care?
Yeah.
Right now, what we have is-
We need to have something to hang a hat on.
It's a, it's a lucery to us right now, is that, where's the line?
It's a lucery to everybody.
Well, we, we can't make a decision on, on shifting sand, can we?
Uh, well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure, um, that we can, are, are alone, it's within our controlled, control to crystallize where that line is.
Which, I think, if he, if he can get a legal opinion-
Yeah, Sandy, Sandy, it would seem to me that, that, the, the-
I cannot give you an opinion where the line is, based on everything I've looked at.
No, listen-
But you could give an, a, a, I think you-
I could, I, I could approach all the parties that we can conceive of and have them agree on where the line heads toward to me.
What, what'd you say? What'd you say before about an attorney's title affidavit as to the quality of the title?
Yeah.
More than likely or not, that it's, it's a defective easement, it's, it's not gonna be defended, I mean, it, it, was it-
You, you, no, no, this National Grid, if you talked, if you personally talked to National Grid, Sandy?
No, 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 uh, we approached them to acquire land and they said not for sale.
No? Yeah, I know, I know, but, but now you could approach them, it would seem to me that just make the call, say, hey, uh, the research I have says that this is defective from A to Z here, there's a defective thing in here, and we just want, we want to, we want to state for the record that it's not in fee, I mean, unless you, unless you wanna clarify, cause we don't think it is, some type of thing that, that gives us a, a-
I'm not in a position to say, uh, what it is. I, I, I don't have, I don't have that underpinning.
Well, ask them if they know. If you challenge them, they, and they may back way down, if they, if you challenge them, they back down, we're, we're, that's it.
How about if we did it together? Because it's really a three-way discussion.
I'm not an attorney, you're the attorney, look at you.
I can, I can, I-
Got a tie and everything, you know, come on, you're, you're the attorney, come on, you got two of them here sitting here.
Oh, really?
And, and you're in the hot seat, we got that one plugged in tonight, you know, boom, boom. You don't, you don't behave, you know, but you hit the button, so.
If, if you don't know-
A little bit of a loss as to what approach to think has good reason to succeed without it being a harangue. Uh, however, if you get all the parties with an interest in the subject in one conversation, it may be very easy. But if you only put, you know, two out of three in place, I'm not so sure.
What, what, what?
So how, how do we do it?
Do you know if a title-
How do we do it?
They even open the door?
Would a title company insure that?
Um, that's a good question, that's a good question.
As an easement? Cause, you know, I've run up against title issues, complex ones, and they-
Yeah.
Title companies will roundtable it and they'll tell you whether or not it's, uh, you know, likely a remote-
Cause, cause National Grid doesn't have any, they don't, they, they don't care.
They don't.
Either way, it's no, it's no skin.
They can use it.
Yeah, it's not, it's not-
But as, as a suggestion-
No, they don't, they don't care to have a discussion.
As a suggestion, if you-
Why, why would they care? What's in it for them?
A good neighbor.
As I said.
Have you ever tried to call National Grid about anything?
No.
It is impossible.
To the Comcast?
They're horrible, they're worse than Comcast, well, I got a horrible Comcast right here.
You'd never get them coming here.
I don't know, I know, I gotta admit, I never have.
If you apply for a title insurance policy on that, to, to ensure that, that it's, is in fact, if the title insurance company will defend that, that it is an easement, would it that solve the problem here?
It is an easement of the rail companies?
No, that it's an easement if you own to the center line, your client owns to the center line.
Your, your client, your client owns center line. Based on information given.
I mean, the, the part that I'm thinking of right now is if you read the jacket-
Because let's take it to the logical extreme, if they asserted that and it's insured, and it comes down the road at some point in time, that the, the other side, the abuser says, no, it's, it's, it's a fee.
Yeah.
And they move to eject, and you have the insurance to cover that, and you may in fact have to move the building five feet.
Yeah. What's coming, what's coming back to me as we're having this discussion is-
Good, good.
Um, a few months back, I had this issue in another case, and, um, we looked to title insurance and the response was, read the jacket and the standard exceptions to the policy. They uniformly take exceptions to adjoining, um, streets and rights of way. They don't insure, as a matter of course, any interest in adjoining streets and rights of way. Um, it's part, it's part of the standard exceptions to, uh, uh, property insurance, so, I, um, I, I agree with you that they assume, you know, they tend to look at these things, um, in, on a very informed basis, and they will assume risk.
But they can give an opinion as to whether the tram, that the conveyance was defective.
Yeah, but you've already got, you've already got two lawyers who are looking at it, I don't think they're gonna, they're gonna, I, I mean, if you want a third opinion, but I guess the point here is, is that this is a foundation for an enforcement allegation. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to find a way to resolve that issue. And I think that there actually is a way to resolve that issue. And I think that there actually is a way to resolve that issue. Um, without necessarily, um, determining what the state of the title is today as opposed to what it will be tomorrow. If, if you follow what I'm saying. Uh, which is between all of us, between all of us in this room.
You would need.
Would be the universe as it, as, of interest in this issue.
You would need three parties to agree.
Yes.
Okay, cause without that third party, if, in fact, you know, if, if, if this board was to agree with you that you, that the building's proper where it is.
Due to the fact that, that, that the, that it's an easement.
That could be.
I, I, I'm gonna sort of suggest to you that.
That could be problematic in the future for the town.
Okay. I, I'm gonna suggest that the, the way to finesse the issue, um, is sort of this, and I'm thinking, uh, in progress here, I haven't checked my thinking on this, okay, but, um, this is just a.
We won't hold you to it, keep going.
Discussion, thank you.
You're doing a good job.
Is that if the three parties were to have an arrangement whereby, for example, SD Park Trust waived rights, whatever rights they have, in the right of way. And the town knew that it didn't need to make any takings, um, in addition to whatever grid, uh, transfer from grid.
The town didn't have to take takings, the town wouldn't have taken a, a.
The town could, could do a deal with grid, knowing that it alone is sufficient. That there is no other interest that they have to worry about.
In that easement, I got you.
In, in that section.
Yeah, I got you, you got your hand.
I mean, I don't know if this is the only soft spot in the right of way, uh, but it is a fairly large one. Um, and it's, I, I wanna say it's one out of about a dozen issues that were identified in the, in the title report. So in effect, what you're doing is, here's an opportunity to remove one of those issues, a fairly major issue. Um, and so the trust would, in effect, waive whatever interest they have in that property. Grid would have its title cleaned up, to the extent that the town and grid are able to consummate a deal.
Without, without, uh, the other party asserting.
The other party has removed themselves.
Yeah.
Uh, in fact. Now, that doesn't, unto itself, dispose of the issue that you have in front of you, the zoning issue, the setback issue.
Well, now, but.
But it could be taken into account in a resolution.
No, Sandy, now, let me just.
So the second step.
No, let me tell you something that I think would work. If a period of time.
Yes, sir.
Period of time, it was agreed that it was a right of way. Okay, then it would seem to me that that would be, give the board permission to then, now you're looking at an expansion of a nonconforming use in that building, that would have to happen, and then a building permit, okay, but if.
Yeah, we got the building permit, yeah.
But, but that period of time that it was assumed and, uh, asserted that, that there was a right of way and not fee, okay, then after, after, after the board gets approval, you know, things happen, you know, so I don't, I mean.
I, I.
You follow me?
The logic has, I, I, I understand the logic, um.
These powder would have to appeal time.
Yeah.
Full wave.
Yeah.
Well, you always have that, yeah.
Yeah. You follow what I'm saying, what I'm saying?
So you would know within a short period of time whether or not you had a conflict.
Yeah.
Right, so you'd find out, you'd find out.
Yeah, I, I think the question, well, the second step, and sort of the, what you, i- is how you would, um, reflect this as a board in a way that disposes of it, again, subject to appeal. Uh, and one of the things that I know has, has come up in discussions on this issue is, is whether or not this is something that the board needs to rule on, under what I call Section Six One O Six, uh, as opposed to.
One O six point six.
Yeah, nonconforming.
Yeah.
Uh, and whether that's sufficient zoning relief to deal with this issue? Again, assuming factually that it, it, there's a five-foot setback violation, whether that's sufficient to authorize that? Or whether you also need a variance? And.
I don't think, I don't think you get a variance. And I, because of, I, I, I don't have my notes with me, I'm sorry, but there's a section in that that I, that I read for the record.
Yeah.
That said, you, in an expansion.
I think it's a really interesting question, whether you need a variance in addition to a so-called Section Six finding. And I think I probably, as a cautionary matter, would apply to the board for both. And if they issued a Section One O Six decision that said, uh, we're, we're allowing this not, this, this, this nonconformity to exist.
Well, 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 I would, an expansion of a nonconformity.
That may be deemed by a court to be sufficient, but if it's not sufficient, then they have a drop-down alternative to a variance, uh, which would be sufficient, as long as you can defend it. But that would be my, that would be my approach.
Yeah.
Um, to, to resolve it.
I, I see, I don't, see, you know, I, I'm familiar with other ordinances that I, that I have administered that, that would, would allow, what, what they did was they lined it up, and I, you know, and I, it happens, and I, I, I've seen it, I've, I've administered things like that in, in different areas where, where the ordinance, but our ordinance doesn't say that. Doesn't say that you can line them up. If that, that would really save everything as far as a setback. As far as the, the, the.
No, but it's, it's a factual consideration that, that, that can bear on your decision whether to give.
What, I, 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 do you have the reference to that law, cause I don't have my information with me today. There's a law that, that says that, that an expansion of a nonconforming use would that definitely is. And I, I don't think it's a problem because the use of storage.
Yeah.
I don't think that's an issue. That's just a, that's a, that has to go through the, the board, that part. But, but as far as the setback, it said that you can't issue an, an expansion of a nonconforming use with a variance. That, that's, that's a, that's a, a, a statute.
I think, I think the question is.
Can't be coupled, I don't think they can.
What form of zoning relief is appropriate for that situation? That's the question. And one answer would be, it's only a so-called Section Six special permit, or it needs to be also a variance. In other words, it's either one or both. Those are the two.
When you say Section Six, are you referring to One O six point six of our ordinance?
Yes, I am. Section Six of the Massachusetts zoning act has a parallel in your bylaw, which is One O Six, so Six One O Six.
Okay, 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 yeah.
Gets a little confusing, but to me, they're one and the same. One is a state law and, and one is the zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
Um, and they track one another almost identically. I don't call it a special permit because I don't believe your bylaw treats it as a special permit, even though as a matter of practice, I respect the fact that you folks call it that way and probably treat it that way. So, I, I, that's a, it's more than a semantic issue, but I, I just wanted to note that distinction. I don't know if I'm making sense there.
Oh, yeah, why would you make sense? Come on, we're gonna start, we're gonna, we're gonna start now. Uh, no, uh.
It, Section Six.
I'll, I'll read that. I, I, you're talking of, uh, uh, Fodier? Uh, uh, Mass General Law Forty?
There, there were like three or four different forms of zoning relief. One is site plan review, which can be either special permit or non-special permit. The Section Six or One, and One O Six.
Yeah.
Which is nonconforming use. It, it can be a special permit, but in other instances, it's not.
Yeah, but see.
And then you have special permits and you have their instances.
Yeah, but see, this here, this here is, is, is an expansion of a nonconforming use. One, and, and of our ordinance, One O six point six.
I agree.
So, I don't think that, that, I don't think the problem of the, of the building and the use of the building is a problem at all. It, because it's storage, storage, storage. We, we, we agree on that, okay? That's part of this matrix, if you will. Not a problem. The only issue we have, and I go back to it, I don't have my notes with me, but, but what, what was it? Uh, under that, uh, state regulation, some law that I got a hold of through, through some help, osmosis, uh, it, 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 it did state, and I, and I, I, I referenced it several times in, in, in the, in the, uh, meetings, uh, that it said that you, you could issue an, uh, an expansion of a nonconforming use.
Yes.
But you couldn't, you, it couldn't be issued with a variance. That's what, it, it was very specific on that. And, and I think that the case might have been, uh.
By means of a variance.
By means of a variance. And, and, and the case was, it was somewhere like in Peabody or, or, in, in, in Beverly or one of those areas. It referenced two, two different cases of that same law, so I, I don't, I don't have it with me, but it, that's the only problem is that the expansion isn't a problem. Uh, permits, you gotta have a permit, gotta have, gotta have, but, but the expansion isn't a problem, it's the location.
I'd be happy to drill down on an issue for you. Uh, I don't think, I think, again, the question is, what is the appropriate form of relief? Uh, and in almost every instance, a, 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 any circumstance, um, there is a mechanism, a square peg to put in a square hole. That's not to say that the board in its discretion is gonna put that peg in that hole. It may say, no, we, we.
Doesn't go.
We exercise our authority and, and decline to do so.
Yeah, but see, Sandy, I, 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 I mean, based on the information that, that I, I was supplied, and, and I, I, I'll look it up. If you give me an email, I'll send you a copy of it. Uh.
I think I know what decision you're talking about.
Yeah, there's two of them, but it says that, that you can't, you, you can issue a, an, an expansion of a nonconforming use, not a problem. But you can't issue, you can't issue a variance on that, on that expansion.
I think that case, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, again, I'm, I'm, I'm going back to the meetings that I reviewed and I'm trying to read exactly what you're thinking and what you did say, is it didn't need a variance in that case. It only needed a Section Six permit.
What are we talking, didn't need it? The building didn't need it?
No, that particular case.
Oh, no, 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 but it, but it, but it says, it, it states in there that you can't, you can't issue, uh, uh, an, uh, you, you can issue an expansion of a nonconforming.
Yep.
Business, but you can't issue a permit for a nonconforming expansion with a variance. It has to meet setback requi, yeah, I think it even references, it has to meet setback requirements in, in that particular, uh, ruling. And there was two of them on, on the same subject.
No, I thi, I think that's, uh, you may be reading something into that decision. I think factually, it only needed a Section Six permit because it, it, there were no non, no, any new nonconformities. Uh, uh, I mean, this law can get crazy complicated, Section Six law.
You know, you know, the case, the case.
Yeah, begins with a B and I'm trying to remember.
It does, yeah, that's right, yeah, you're right, you're right.
It's one of the granddaddy cases in Section Six.
That's, it's an older one, yeah, you're right, yeah. But there was two of them on the same subject.
I don't remember what the other one is.
I mean, I, you know, I'll, I'll look it up and get back to you with that. If you give me a card, I'll, I'll.
I, 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 I will. I'm, I'm happy to, um, because I.
I have it home. I don't, I didn't bring the books tonight, so I'll, I'll look that up and, and give you that reference because
Yeah.
that's the only problem, is that, is the, the fact that, that I feel that, that you, you, and the board felt, after I read it to them, that, that we, we couldn't issue, uh.
You can't expand by, by means of a variance.
It's right, by means of a variance.
No, you need a section, you absolutely need a Section Six permit. The question is whether you also need a variance.
Yeah, but if it doesn't be setback, you'd have to.
There are a lot of cases that parse that line, some of which find Section Six is sufficient, and others of which say, particularly when it's a new nonconformity, not the addition of, uh, an additional or an intensified nonconformity. For example, if you had a building that, um, uh, wasn't sufficiently set back from a sideline and you just added more building.
You, you, no, you.
Along that sideline.
That's what, you're a hundred percent right, I agree with you.
It's only Section Six.
You, then that, that, that's an expansion of a nonconform, that's what we talked about tonight with, see.
Not a new nonconformity.
When you were sitting, when you guys were listening to us tonight with that, that, that parking lot.
Yeah.
The first thing was asked was, was how can we, how can we address that as an expansion of a nonconforming use? Well, because, because a triangle of that, I don't know if you saw it, but a triangle of that was already in the residential. So if you're gonna add to it, that would've been an expansion of, of a nonconforming use. So exactly, if they attached that building to another building, that would be an expansion, not a new one. You see what I'm saying? I agree with you. Yeah, yeah, expansion of a nonconforming use, but, but that's not what happened.
But to go back to the point, I, I, I think the case that you were referring to doesn't preclude a variance where it's needed.
Well, I think it was pretty clear that it said you couldn't, you couldn't issue, uh, an expansion of a, of a, of a pre-existing nonconforming use uh, with a variance to setback. And ta, you, just give me a card, now, I'll, I'll, I'll get you that reference, I'll look it up. Is it on there?
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's all right, I'll, I'll get back in a while, is that all right? Yeah.
All right, so you see, you want that?
Yeah, I will. What's yours? I got yours, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I'll, I'll get you that reference, cause that, that's what we're hung up on.
Well, uh, um.
But we, we, we made a lot of progress.
I actually think we can make sense of it. I'm pretty confident we can make sense of it, but I wanna make sure I, I understand.
Not with me, yeah.
Yeah, I.
No, I'm too motivational, you can't understand.
I think so.
Come on. No, I, no, we're pretty close, and we're, we're very close.
Well, you're right on that, we clear an impact.
Somehow we can, I, yeah, I think somehow we can make that work. I don't, I'm, you know, I, I don't, I, uh, but let, let me get back to you tomorrow on, on.
I, I, I think that's the way to leave it then. If you think that there's a impediment to, um, the issuance of relief that would, um.
No, you know, I.
Legitimatize.
The, yeah, then listen, something just.
On a factual assumption that the property line is the sideline.
I just, I just, come, come to me. How, how far apart are these buildings?
Uh, they're, they're pretty close. I, I don't have a plan with me.
What if, what if, if you attach it, then we're gonna go with expansion of a nonconforming use?
But are the, but are the, are the buildings five feet back?
Doesn't matter.
They're on the line.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, but I mean.
They are, they are what you said.
Yeah, I mean, it does, see, see, cause now we're back to the same thing we had earlier, it's an expansion of a nonconforming use. I mean, nonconformal.
But now you're expanding beyond the setback.
Yeah, but, but it's already there. We're, we're expanding the.
I'm not sure that.
You're following Sandy?
Changes the fact of what it is. You can, you can look at it that way, um.
You understand what I mean?
I do, I do, yeah. I, I understand. But I, I, I'd like to straighten out, uh, the, your conception of the law.
Oh, yeah, I, I'll, I'll get that.
And how it applies here, because I think if, if I was, if, if I'm able to, to, to help you see it the way I see it, and maybe you'll agree, maybe you won't, that you'll see a path.
You wear glasses? Maybe I have to use your glasses. See, mine, mine, oh.
He's got new ones.
Yeah, there you go.
Are they rose colored?
Yeah, they rose colored, yeah.
My prescription is changing.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah, my grandson, he wants unscripted glasses, so maybe that's what I'm gonna get. Yeah, well, listen, I think we've made tremendous strides. I mean, you, you, I mean, I feel very comfortable that, that we're gonna get this resolved.
Right, I, I, I appreciate you listening.
So do we want to have it come back May first or whatever it is?
Well, uh, yeah, yeah, well, I, I'd like, yeah, I'd, I'd like to be able to, to touch bases with you on that and, uh.
Well, I'll tell you what, uh, why don't we, uh, do the email exchange? And then if you think it would be productive, uh, to do another one of these sessions, we'd be happy to, to do that.
Okay. All right. That's, that, that's fine. Now, now, you haven't got a chance to talk, and you, you wanna earn some money tonight? What do you wanna say?
I agree with everything he said.
Do you have anything else to add, Tom?
No.
Are, are we on the right, do you think we're on the right path here or what?
We are, absolutely. This is what we wanted to do, this is why we brought Sandy in.
Okay. Do you have any? No, we got some of those, yeah, you got anything, yeah, yeah. Anything else you wanna say, you guys?
Um, if you want it in May also, uh, uh, if you have a chance to read any of the other stuff that we sent you.
Yeah.
If you think a dialogue would be productive on any of that or all of it, um, we're game.
Yeah, well, it, it looks like we're.
And it's unusual to do this in public session as opposed to executive session, but we're fine if you want it to be transparent and open.
Yeah, we, we, you know, we don't, I mean, I don't.
That's.
Yeah, I, you're, I mean.
Preferable.
Yeah, why don't, let, let everyone see how we're trying to resolve it. It's not, nothing secret. To me, it isn't.
No.
Unless you guys.
We're just trying to get it right.
Are you guys, you know, are you guys uncomfortable talking the way we've been talking?
No, not at all.
Okay, yeah, all right. Well, let's, let's try to get this resolved.
Okay, sounds great.
Okay, good. Thank you guys for coming in.
Good night.
You too. You too.
Thank you.
Sorry about the screw-up on that correspondence, but.
Well.
Well, would those send out certified?
No, no, no.
No, I didn't get them.
Regular mail.
Yeah, no.
This wasn't a board.
Yeah, no, I, I didn't, I didn't get that, but I, I need, I'm.
Cause there was something certified I missed, I went to the post office and it was already sent back, so I missed it.
That was, that was a lawyer, the, the P opener.
That was something else, that was from you, probably.
Oh, that was the, uh, that was the appeal.
Ah, okay.
It was the Land Court Appeal, and we're required by law to send it to individuals.
Yeah, we got it.
Well, I thought maybe, maybe it was in the same packet, maybe that's how I missed it.
I got a call when I was in Florida. Yeah, we had someone taking care of my cat, was all upset that the sheriff showed up, and I said, I said, I know all about it, no problem.
Do you want us to send it to you again?
Yeah, no, 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 I'll get a copy of it.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna scan it and I'll email it.
Send one to the board.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look it up tomorrow, and I'll, I'll, I'll email it over to you, we appreciate it.
Can you do? Yeah, 'cause I, I missed mine, if you don't mind.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Don't forget your new glasses, Dave. Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay.
What's this one?
I don't know, it's from Julie, I didn't ask.
Who's this from?
From me.
You?
Thank you.
Okay.
I love my books, make sure you give me the receipt, a copy of the return receipt for the book, okay?
Yeah.
All right, thanks. But she just resigned?
Yeah, well, similar.
She got a new job and she, maybe she can ask for it, so, right?
Oh, okay. Well, uh, let's, we'll, we'll take, we're, we're down to.
And then there weren't.
Yeah, we're down to.
It's gonna be Utah, but that's it.
Yeah, that's it, yeah, uh, well, listen, let's go through this regulatory, uh, issues, uh, Julia Haas, five thirty-five oh six. And then, now, listen, the, uh, I don't, I think we should probably, on the minutes, wait till next meeting, 'cause it, I, I think we all ought to read them. What this is, Julie wants things in transcript, this is not just minutes, this is a transcript of the last meeting.
Okay.
Uh, so.
Yeah, I'd like to read it over.
And I, um, I sent them out today, 'cause I went through them again today to make sure.
Yeah, so, so let's, let's hold off on the, on the minutes till next meeting, 'cause it's a transcript, okay?
That's a lot of work.
Yeah, and then, so, let me just read this for the record.
Did you have it sent to us individually?
Yeah, she did.
I sent it out today.
Oh, all right. Uh, this, this is as of, uh, right now, April first, two thousand fifteen.
Was, was that requested by someone?
Well.
No, I automatically did it, because I didn't know which way this was going, and I just assumed that if it, if it was going to the worst, worst case scenario.
She, she did it.
I didn't know if it was, by council.
No, no, no.
Okay.
You got it.
No. Uh, so, just for the record, just for the record, uh, I'll read this, uh, and this is Glom's on the board, uh, Tom Wafer Chairman, please be advised of my, uh, intent to resign as a full-time voting member of the zoning board of appeals, as of ten thirty PM. And then, what to say, Wednesday, April first, and respectfully, uh, she, I can't read her name, but it was, uh, Jane, Jane Moran, I mean, that's a doctor's name, but, uh, for the record, so we're down, Charlie, we're down to one, two, three, four, uh, four people.